All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special board meeting. And so we will start the or start the meeting with the flag salute. Ready? Begin. Thank you. I call the public hearing. Called order the public hearing on whether state or local circumstances require alterations, alteration to expenditures from the district state of Washington financing assistance. We're going to proceed to in an orderly way, and I would ask your cooperation in following the procedures for this hearing. This hearing is being videoed and recorded. And when you address the board, if there are those in the room that would like to address the board, please begin by stating your name and address and speak slowly and clearly. That would help us all out a lot. Thank you. By way of background, the district's 2018 bond election resolution, which the voters approved at the April 24th, 2018 special election, listed specific capital projects authorized to be financed by the district's bonds and the state of Washington financing assistance, which are referred to as the project expenditures. Recently, district administration has identified certain state and local circumstances that may require an alteration to those project expenditures. The purpose of this hearing is not to answer all questions about the state and local circumstances or any alterations to project expenditures. Instead, it is to allow you an opportunity to present information and your views on these subjects to the board. Please limit the information you present to these subjects. Questions will be noted and may be responded to later in the hearing by district administration or consultants. The board will only take action at a future meeting. No action will be taken at this meeting. Before calling for information from you and feedback from you, I would like to ask our associate superintendent for district operations, Chris Skokel, to present information to be considered by the board and those in attendance.
Thank you, President Hartwig. I will, once I get into the presentation, I will talk about a few statutory requirements with the hearing and what we have tonight. Before then, I have a couple just housekeeping things with the to let the record reflect that prior to tonight, notice of this public hearing was given by advance publication in the Yakima Heraldway public. As noted in exhibit six was advertised on June 26th and July 3rd. So I'll go through the exhibits in the notebook here in a bit. Secondly, I will present only a summary of the information regarding the proposed alterations to project expenditures. More detailed background may be found in resolution number 15 dash 22, which is exhibit four that we have before you. And copies of the resolution are available upon request. It's also been published on our website since June 21st, the resolution. All right. So with that said, I think that I will go into the presentation. You will? Okay, so first and foremost, the requirements per RCW 28A 530020, number two, it requires a two-step process for the board to look at potentially using any remaining state financial assistance funding that's available at the end of any bond project. So there's a two-step process per RCW, as I mentioned, and 2018 bond resolution 01-18. First and foremost, the school board is required to hold a public hearing to provide public with the opportunity to present information and opinions to the board regarding the proposed alterations. And then secondly, the board can follow up at a following meeting to consider approving the alterations at a second public hearing. So that that public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow evening. So the school board will be able to evaluate public comment that you received tonight and our recommendation as well, and then you can make decisions based on that. The district recommendation for the use of these funds. We, as noted in the July 23rd meeting, our recommendation is the the school board make the decision to alter the specific expenditures from the state financing assistance for the projects. All is originally authorized by resolution 01-18 to permit the district to use excess state financing assistance to partially cover costs to construct a new transportation cooperative facility and to make other district-wide health, safety, security, and capital improvements. All is determined necessary and advisable by the board. And also to adopt a new resolution or amend resolution 01-18 to reflect the alterations. So that is the the school districts, the administration recommendation is to construct a new transportation cooperative facility and to make these other district-wide health and safety improvements as necessary. So why, you might ask, why are there remaining state financial resources after the projects as authorized in the 2018 bonds? So first and foremost, due to the significantly lower than anticipated budgeted construction costs at the time of bid acceptance, if you remember when we went out to bid and as you authorized the bid that came in low, we realized that we we were significantly lower, the bid was lower than what the anticipated costs were. That was part of it. So we have a really good track record with our current architect, NAC Architecture. They've done the district really well with the 2012 bond projects as well as the 2018 bond projects in that their cost estimating has just been spot on and has been able to allow and provide for projects that have been on time and on budget or under budget. So we've been very fortunate there. Secondly, there is a process where there's several people involved in managing the fiscal side of things with these projects. We being part of that process, we also have construction management folks looking at that. We have our architect also looking at that. We have a lot of checks and balances. So fortunately, with those checks and balances, it's provided us the opportunity to have state financial assistance available at the end of these 2018 projects. We're very fortunate with that.
Chris, part of that too can just be our lack of use of contingencies, right?
Correct. That's right. Good point. So why a new transportation cooperative facility? So we've had lots of conversations about this facility over the years. As you know, this is, I just completed my 22nd year with the school district. We've had a variety of people involved in the facility committee discussions around what our facility, facility condition, facilities, conditions have been. And the transportation facility came up every single time. I mean, it's been part of intimate conversations about, hey, we need, we have some work to do with this facility. And rightfully so, it fell to the to the bottom of the priority list as we had these other schools that were antiquated and needed to be replaced. So students first, we, the decision, the school board has made the decision about going out and replacing the schools before the transportation facility. So it it has been discussed. The current shop was built in 1975 and just doesn't provide the space or the equipment to accommodate the needs of the district to maintain and repair buses and the motor pool vehicles. For example, the shop, we can't use any lifts in the shop. The ceiling in the shop is not high enough. We don't have enough base space to be efficiently working on buses and motor pool vehicles at the same time. Our wash bay situation is not sufficient. We have one outdoor wash bay adjacent to the shop that is a safety risk for staff in the winter time. And it's it's not sufficient for the district and what our needs are. So those are the main considerations. I know I was asked a question the other day about have we thought about renovation of this facility? And at the time, I answered the question to the gentleman saying, you know, we've mainly been focused on a new facility, but I was reminded by our architect when I called him this morning. He said, well, Chris, we did have a few conversations about that and it all boiled and circled back to the point of renovation was not going to get to the core of our issue with this facility. We don't have the space around that facility to expand the shop, to make more bays, to add additional wash bays. We can't encroach on other parts of the facility with the covered parking for the buses because we're maxed on our space. We have 31 buses. We have 31 spots to park buses. So we don't have the ability to expand. Otherwise, it would be at least we could have, you know, the office space maybe could have been handled that way because maybe if we had additional covered bays, we could build additional office space. But right now, we have four people in a very small space in the office. But our main issue with that facility is the shop, and it has been for years.
Well, and I know, just to interject, it was it brought a lot of clarity for me anyway, and I can't speak for my fellow board members. But when we toured and visited the facility, so thank you for putting that opportunity together because, you know, we've talked about it before, but I personally haven't really had a chance to look at it firsthand like we did that day. That really answered a lot of my questions. And, you know, what you're, you're describing was certainly apparent in my mind.
I thought it was important, we thought it was important that the school board tour. Not that it's been your first time over there, but we had a specific time where you had that opportunity. Also, the public, I thought it was a great idea. I remember who threw that out. It might have been Kevin to say that we should, we should think about having a an open house so people could come in. And I appreciated one of our gentlemen in the audience here that came in and viewed and toured the facility. So. Okay, so the cooperative highlights. We have had conversations with Union Gap School District. They are on board to join the cooperative with us as a participating member. We would, they have six buses and one or two motor pool vehicles that we would maintain for them. They would not be housed here. We would not run their transportation department. We would run the maintenance of their fleet. And that would be, they would still run their own transportation program. We would just maintain their their buses and motor pool vehicles. So they would be, the agreement would be that we would service their buses for a minimum of 10 years. And they would agree to be a member for 10 years. So that's, that's the agreement with them. The new facility would be constructed with sufficient capacity to accommodate the needs of both districts. So the their projected square footage is 15,470. The projected costs for the facility, 9.1 million, of which $4 million we are eligible for in state financial assistance match by, from, because it's a cooperative facility. We would not be eligible for any state match funds if it was not a cooperative facility. So we're almost getting half of the cost of the project in state financial assistance. The new facility would include four bays so that our mechanic could work on several buses at once. It would help us so we would not have to send work out. Maybe real big jobs we may still have to send out, but we would be able to do a lot of the jobs that we're sending out in-house. And it would be much more efficient because he pulls a bus in, he has to take some parts off, he orders parts. So while he's waiting for those parts to come in, he's working on another bus. That is just the efficiency of it is is much better with more space. This new facility would provide sufficient office space for support staff. I firmly believe after we've spent a lot of time over in the office during the busy times of the day, it is so chaotic over there with the radio and everybody in such close quarters. The efficiency of work over there could be much better if it was, it was in a better layout. The facility will include four bays with lifts and two indoor wash bays. Oh, I've mentioned that, and sufficient office space. I talked about the minimum of 10 years on the service commitment and the services to be provided for affordable pricing and timely completion. And I've discussed the financing plan, and I want to highlight it one more time. The total projected cost of the project is $9.1 million. A facility of 15,470 square feet. Projected funding to cover the cost of the field facility would be $4 million in state assistance, state matching money. And 4.5 million is projected in the excess state assistance from the 2018 bond projects. And then 600, a projected 600,000 and other local funds that are in the capital projects fund to to complete the project. And again, no state assistance would be available if we weren't looking at a cooperative facility.
Chris, a question on the state match, the 4 million state match is matched because of the cooperative plan.
Correct.
That we qualify for because of the cooperative. And then the 4.5 is the excess bond, but is all, is it state match money or is it local taxpayer?
It's state assistance. It's not local. What we're required to do is spend bond funds, the taxpayer funds first. And then at the end is what you use your state matching money last. And that's a requirement of the state.
That money is still there and available to us.
Yes. Yes. And the school board would make the decision on. I also included in this presentation, which there are copies at the door by the agenda's a site plan of what we're looking at with this new facility. You can see there in the white that, on the far right up in the corner, that's the old shop, which would be converted into storage, a storage space. And then the, you can see the bays, covered bays, which are not going to have a lot of construction, but they will be reskinned and, I don't know the appropriate term, but roofing and such. And then the new facilities there in white there that here is got her, her on there. And then to the left there is the old, is the current John Campbell parking lot, the old, the one that they used for staff parking. And that would be now utilized for the transportation department for visitors. And the drivers will park there. And so anything else you want to highlight, anything you want to highlight on that?
Can I ask a quick question? Where is the current office located?
Current office is right next to this shop on the top right. It, the office, the current office used to be covered parking. And they took part of those, they took three stalls out and they converted it into office space.
Chris, can I ask a question? The bus access drive, that's not changing.
No.
They'll still be entering and exiting from that side street.
They can still enter and exit from that.
Do you plan to use the bus access drive that's connected to the middle school or is that just a motorized gate?
They can still, but oops, oops, sorry. They can still, oh, you did that, or did I do? Oh, no, I did. Oh, this is mine. Okay. Oops. So they could, buses would still be able to come through the middle school lane and then back into the back side of the facility. There would be a gate there, and then they would also be able to come through off home avenue through that.
Off of home, that's the, that's the typical route that we use now.
Yeah. Yes. Which one? Yeah, the new canopy. Those will probably go out the other side. Yep, you're right. Okay.
Chris, sorry, good question. If this were to go through and in part of Union Gap's membership in this program, what would that entail? If we have several more buses coming through for maintenance, are we anticipating hiring more people to service those vehicles? And if so, who's going to be covering that?
We, we still need to have those conversations about workload and whether we want to bring on a part-time mechanic. In a perfect world, we would maintain the buses with just six more with one mechanic, but we haven't evaluated that yet. So the, obviously, Union Gap would be paying cost for their maintenance, and we would factor all of that into a financial plan. And then we would make those decisions. Yeah.
And their commitment to us and the partnership is a, was it 10 years?
Minimum 10 years, yeah.
10 years.
And we can bring on other partners along the way. Let's say that Seela Fire wanted to have their vehicles maintained. We would, we could have conversations with them and make decisions about whether we want to bring on other partners. Once the other part, if other partners are interested in joining, they wouldn't have that 10-year. We wouldn't have a 10-year requirement with them. They wouldn't with us. They would just be able to be part of the cooperative and we would maintain their vehicles as well.
Very small school districts that didn't have the ability to hire employees or have the space or their resources to be able to meet the bus requirements for maintenance and and other things. So it is a great benefit to small school districts. And Union Gap would, obviously, they see a benefit if this was to move forward.
At the end of the day, the co-op allows us for the $4 million in state match funds. But with, once we're past that, the day-to-day operations, we try to net zero, make money on it. Where does that, has this become an income stream for us or is kind of, we try to figure out a way to break even with the fees that we're charging?
We're looking at basically breaking even, especially with one participating member. I mean, maybe it is somewhat of a not a moneymaker, but we may make a little extra money if other partners come in. But really, the overall goal would be to break even.
And then traffic wise, six buses, like Joe said, you know, we might have to, maybe not, what about traffic? Concerns there? Are we looking at one bus at a time where it doesn't really make difference or?
We basically would be looking at one bus at a time. We're not, and that was a good question on one of our meetings about is it going to impact traffic on First Street? Do we need to get the city involved? And we've had conversations with our architect and the city manager and such, so they're aware. And we don't believe that there'll be an impact with one bus coming at a time. I don't think they could afford to have more than one bus down. Stephanie knows.
Six buses total, if I remember right.
Yeah, they do.
In their whole fleet.
Yeah.
How many does Seela have?
31.
We're at, we're talking about adding six to our workload. But comparatively, it's a fairly, it's a small number.
Yep. And we wouldn't be storing their buses. We may have one bus here at a time. And we could store the one bus that's here at a time in the old wash bay slot next to the old shop. Okay, with that said, and I guess one last thing I wanted to mention on the state match. The full square footage that we're projecting is fully matched. So it's not a bigger facility than what's matched. So the total square footage in the project that's proposed is generating state match money. Now, sometimes you build facilities where you have additional square footage that doesn't drive state match. But this, the full facility drives state match. Just wanted to make sure you knew that. Okay, so the projected timeline, if this moves forward, is the bid process would start right away. The construction phase one would start the end of August. Be completed around the middle of June of 2023. Partial move in through the summer of 2023. And then construction phase two and punchless move in on between August 21 and in October 20th of 2023. So that's what the timeline would look like if this moves forward. Okay, so let me just make sure there aren't any other opponents that I want to mention here. First, I want to just introduce the exhibits into the record for the public hearing. So as you can see in this three-ring notebook, we have a copy of RCW 28A 530020. We have the resolution 01-18, which is the, the original resolution for the 2018 bonds. We have exhibit three, which is the district administrative recommendation, which was provided to the board on June 23rd. We have resolution 15-22, which was the resolution setting the public hearing this evening. And we have a certificate of notice of public hearing, which is signed by me on exhibit five. And then the affidavit of publication of the notice of public hearing, exhibit six. And then lastly, exhibit seven, additional written communications received by the district prior to the public hearing, which we, we have not received any. So there's nothing in that section. With that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Hartwig.
I would just ask the board if there are additional questions that we'd like to ask, Chris.
Oh, Chris, we spend our money first, state match on the tail end of it. Is there any circumstance that Union Gap gets cold feet for some reason, and then we're not eligible for our state match? Or are they, do they sign the agreement before we get rocking?
They signed the agreement preliminarily, remember, back in January. And it didn't guarantee them anything because there were stipulations that had to happen before this moved on. And that this is one of them, the public hearing. We also needed to get the green light from the state that this project would be funded for the state match, which we did receive. But Union Gap is fully aware that if the school board makes a decision to not move forward in this, with this project, that they understand that it won't happen.
And on the others, the other side of that, if we do approve it, then they're committed and, and there's not a no backing out at that point, and they're probably anticipating the opportunity to call up with us.
Correct.
And there's not, been nothing since January in terms of process or regulation or requirements or state information or messaging that has changed the plan since the beginning of what was presented to Union Gap?
No.
Your questions, comments?
Just had a logistical question. I noticed that both construction phases are going to be during the school year. So do we foresee any challenges or how we are going to surmount those?
We've had discussions and we believe we can make do during those times. Yeah. Good question.
So just to, because I'm not the math guy in the room, but I think it's an important topic. 9.1 million total is the estimate from our architect. And so if we were to go to bid, and the market, the construction climate is up and down and all over the place these days. Is, I mean, how confident are they in that number? Do, are there contingency, additional contingencies figured in because of that? Or, you know, how solid is the 9.1, I guess is the real question.
We've had discussions about that as well. And I appreciate the fact that our architect is and the construction management folks have come to the table and say, okay, we need to talk about X, Y, and Z on this project because we need to think about if the bid comes in higher than expected. They've moved things out of the original project. Original component of the bid made them bid alternates. So that if, if the construction costs come in too high, then the ones, the bid alternates, we would need to do without. But we've been very intentional about making sure those are things that we can live without if we need to to do that. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we went through that a little bit with the early learning center. Initial bids came in high, allowed us to not accept the bid, make our alterations, contract our alterations. With a dual project. So we're not committed until we accept the bid.
Correct.
Job, Chris. Thank you.
Good.
I just wanted to make one more comment. I feel like well, along with the fiscal stewardship that we have in the district, I think that one perfect example of that is the board's decision to refinance our 2012 bonds. Save the taxpayers 4.7 million dollars and we, the interest rate, we saved over 2% on the interest rate. It was over 4%. Now we're at 2.11% on the interest for those bonds that were refunded. And so I just, I feel really, really good about that. And we did let the community know that they are reaping the benefit of that savings as well.
And those lower bond, that lower bond rate, the refinance will come to, come back to all of us as taxpayers in the form of a lower rate starting next year, if I remember. That's significant, you know, and so kudos to you and your team for, you know, chasing that one and getting that in place because, I mean, that's a significant savings. And I think we can feel good about the responsibility that we have with public money and doing the best that we can to save where we can and, and provide the most efficient use of those funds and provide that production. That's awesome. Yeah, I'm glad you added that. All right, any other comments? All right, with that, thank you, Associate. All right, with that, thank you, Associate Superintendent Scacco. Well done. As always, thank you for the information and the thorough overview. We will now move into the public testimony portion of the hearing. Each person wishing to speak will be giving, given an opportunity to do so for a period not not to exceed three minutes. And so this would be the time of the hearing where we are opening the floor to those that are in the room that would like to address the board. Please begin with your name and address and then we will start a three-minute. Remember, we are going to take notes. We're not, don't engage in dialogue or back and forth. It's a, it's informational, so we're, we're here to gather input and we'll diligently listen. And so the floor is yours. So I would ask if there's someone in the room that would like to start.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Hendricks, four-three-three Ames Road. And other than looking for a cool place beside my pickup, decided to come in and make comment. The, I've been chairman of or co-chair of levies and bonds throughout the nineteen nineties. And in every case, in all of those, the transportation department was brought up. And we did not help with the problem. I know it was built in nineteen seventy-five, but in nineteen ninety-five, we needed to help out. We, in nineteen ninety-eight, we needed to help out. We just couldn't afford to do it. And now we're three times bigger in student body and three, I think, I came in nineteen eighty-nine, we had fifteen buses. And now we're looking at thirty-one plus a whole bunch of other staff vehicles. It's been a problem since the early nineties and I hope that with this funding and that this, you guys have really come up and done well to have in the budget, I hope that you will consider upgrading the transportation department because it really does need to have it done. Appreciate the ability to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Jeremy Hines, and I live at one eighty-one North Johnson Road. So first of all, I want to say thank you because my wife and I, our children, use the Seela School District transportation system and we're very thankful for the bus drivers and the individuals who work in the industry. It's a rather thankless job and we're thankful that there are people who are willing to help. I spent an hour with Chris at the bus garage, so thank you for doing that. While I was there, I observed several things. Rather than having the air compressor and the pressure washer in a separate room to keep from needing to provide hearing protection, as I'm sure when either one kicks on, it's above OSHA approved sound levels. The noisy appliances are on the shared wall with the office, so they can be heard in the office. The metal building that the shop is, has no insulation unless you count the vapor barrier on the ceiling. And they have a second work bay full of parts, so instead of building a part storage building, they take up workspace. Instead of building an insulated and heated metal building to wash the vehicles in, they built an asphalt curb around an area for an outdoor wash bay. They've already had a few people slip on the ice. Rather than building a completely separate facility, I guess my question is, why don't we update and upgrade the facility that we have? We could easily build an insulated park shed as well as an indoor wash bay. I talked to several contractors here in the Seela area and Seela School District could likely add twenty to forty feet to the shop bays, twenty to forty feet to the office, insulate the shop, build the parts building and build the two-stall indoor wash facility for seven hundred thousand dollars. Then either use the excess four point five million in bond funds to pay down the principal on the bond, giving taxpayers break. As a side note, and I do have, I printed five copies of this, there's the, what I referenced on the back. But Washington State predicts headline inflation to reach seven point eight percent this year. Or we could use the money to build a STEM facility at the high school. Hunter System said to me that the low math scores are due to lack of STEM availability at the high school. Scores on the SBA at Seela High School for math have been well below forty percent grade level performance for the past decade. These are worse than the district average, but they reflect what happens just before Seela School District students enter into college, training and/or the workforce. Chris says that the true interest rate for the bond is three point eight two percent and that's nearly twice as high as what she was able to refinance the old board bond for and the savings on the old bond was four point seven million from the refinance.
Mr. Hines, the three minutes is up. I'll give you another thirty seconds if you'd like.
Nope, I'm done.
All right.
Did you guys want any of these?
If you'd like to leave copies, we'd love a copy of it. Thank you. And thank you for the time and the energy and the passion that you've put into the project. Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Lou, Dave DeWire, fifty-two oh-seven, Parabut. I work at Seela High School and I've been there for a decade. I've had many opportunities to go to the transportation department and it is clearly a facility that was not made for what we have in the district right now. Nineteen seventy-five is a far cry from twenty twenty-two in Seela. And I just want to add my support for the, the complete change. You know, we don't want to Band-Aid what we have. The people that are there are dedicated, they work hard, they deserve a facility that matches their needs and just want to throw my support behind what you guys are doing. Say thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no one, nobody else in the room, so I assume that that would be a public comment. We did ask for any written comments to be read and we have none. We checked right prior to the meeting and there are no written comments to submit in this hearing. So we will let the record show that there are no additional speakers and or written comments that need to be recorded and captured in today's hearing. So with that, we've gathered the information, the feedback, we've got the background presented by Ms. Scacco and the board will not take action tonight. And so we'd like to thank you, but we will consider it. And in tomorrow night's meeting, the resolution will be before the board for consideration. And so at this point, we'd like to thank you for your participation, everyone. We'll consider your views together with all the other information that's been presented and reach a decision about any alterations at a future board meeting tomorrow night. So with that, that concludes our agenda for this formal hearing and the meeting is now adjourned.